Will the clerk give us roll call, please?
Jerry DiTulio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristi Davis. Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Time for approval of the minutes of March 24th. Are any objections or changes to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We've had a motion to approve from Kristi Davis and a second from Bud Starker. Okay, let's move right on to proclamations and ceremonies. All right, poll the council for the minutes, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. We're going to start with proclamations, starting with Day Without Hate. Do I have here two high school students, Martha Rail and Hannah Gouda? I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing this correctly. Gouda? Just done right here. I'll read the proclamation first. This is a proclamation, as I said, Day Without Hate. Whereas in May 2007, a small committee of Stanley Lake High School students and teachers formed the first Day Without Hate. Their goal was to draw attention and promote nonviolence, respect, and unity within our schools. And today, whereas tens of thousands of students and community members across Jefferson County, the state of Colorado, and the nation participate in Day Without Hate as a celebration of unity, a rejection of fear, and a commitment to work toward nonviolent solutions in any conflict in our schools. And whereas, we are a community, we are, as a community, are responsible for cultivating an atmosphere of tolerance among our diverse populations. And whereas, by publicly acknowledging and celebrating Day Without Hate, the city of Wheat Ridge makes a stand with our schools to reject fear and violence and work toward embracing our differences and promoting an inclusive, safe, and harmonious environment for all of our residents. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Wheat Ridge, I, Joyce J., Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2014, as Day Without Hate. And Martha, Hannah, excuse me, did you want to say something?
The heat is on. I don't know what really to say. I mean, this is the biggest one we're having this year. We got the Peace Jam Award, or the Global Call to Action from the Peace Jam, and they just said, "Good job," and keep doing it. So, I mean, we've expanded a lot this year, from 15,000 shirts sold last year to 22,000, I believe, this year. So, I'm really excited for this day. It's my first time planning it, so yeah.
Thank you. I think she had a lot to say. All right, our second proclamation, let's see if I can call from Devon Buckles from Urban Waters Partnership. Devon? I'll read the proclamation. This is about Arbor Day and Tree City USA, and as you all know, we've had that honor for many years. If you guys want to get up, that's great. Whereas trees have always been regarded as an important asset to the citizens of the community of Wheat Ridge, providing one of the first business opportunities in the 1860s. And whereas trees continue to be respected as an important part of the quality of life to the citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge and visitors, enhancing property values and community spirit. And whereas, our mature trees are suffering from the devastation of environmental stresses, including insect and disease, winter drought, and severe temperature. And whereas citizens, businesses, green industry, elected officials, and staff continue to work together to maintain and provide for tree-covered streets, parks, and properties as part of a comprehensive community forestry program. And whereas, the city of Wheat Ridge has been awarded Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Now therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, do hereby declare Saturday, April 26th, as City of Wheat Ridge Arbor Day Celebration, and encourage all citizens and businesses of Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by planting a tree or shrub. That's Saturday, the 26th, and we're going to be watching, aren't we? All right, thank you very much. Did you want to say something?
Absolutely, yes. Congratulations on your Tree City USA Award. I'm Devon Buckles, and I'm the coordinator for the South Flat River Urban Waters Partnership. I also work for the Colorado State Forest Service, and that's why I'm here this evening to give you this award on behalf of the Tree City USA program. So, thanks for giving me a minute on your agenda. You know, each year, the application for a Tree City USA has to be resubmitted. It's not an automatic renewal by any means. And so, the community needs to demonstrate to the Arbor Day Foundation in Nebraska that they are meeting certain criteria in order to receive this award. So, those criteria, there's four categories that you need to meet in order to get this award. Number one, you have to have a tree board or professional tree manager that's hired by the community. And we do have that. It is here this evening. And you need to have a tree ordinance that is adopted by the community. Third is you need to have a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita. Also, you need to have an Arbor Day observance and proclamation, which obviously you do have, and we just heard. So, just on behalf of the urban forest, I have to say that please, you know, continue to do this wonderful work that you're providing for community forestry. Those trees are very, very hard-working trees. They help to clean our air and water, conserve energy, help control stormwater runoff, and increase property values. And these benefits not only make the neighborhoods much more livable, but they also translate directly into dollars. And the benefits I just mentioned, when they're quantified and actually assigned a dollar value, really can be quite considerable. So, keep that in mind, and we just wanted to say thank you so much to the city of Wheat Ridge for your continuing investment in your urban forest. It makes a big difference. And this number 35 is very significant. There are not very many communities that we're giving this 35-year award to. That means that Wheat Ridge was really one of the original partners in this Tree City program. So, thank you very much for your continuing efforts, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Oh, that's all right. I did, we did declare April 26th as Arbor Day, and we are in fact going to have a tree planting at the Historic Park on Robb Street at about noon. And the DAR is going to donate a blue spruce. So, I'd like to invite you all to show up for that. Thank you.
I'm pretty proud of that, 35, 35 years, wow. Time for citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster. Or citizens who wish to speak on agenda items, please sign the general agenda roster or applicable public hearing roster before the item is called to be heard. And I see we have a list of citizens who are wishing to speak. Go ahead and line up and come forward, stand up and come forward. Go to the podium, please, and state your name and address.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask the audience, if you're going to speak either during public comment or on one of the agenda items, please sign the appropriate sheet and print your name clearly so that we can record it properly in the minutes. Thank you.
These are non-agenda items.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
And I'm here with another member, Anthony DiTulio, signed as well. So, it was understood that I get six minutes, then?
Three minutes per person.
Yeah, I'm getting his three minutes.
That'll be, oh, you're going to do both?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. My name, as I said, is Greg Mueller. That is M-U-L-A-R. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Wheat Ridge Professional Firefighters Association. My address is 3880 Uppam Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and the citizens of Wheat Ridge. My name, as I said, is Greg Mueller. I'm with the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. I'm going to talk a little bit about the mill levy tonight. I've been with the department for three and a half years. First two were as a volunteer firefighter. The last year and a half has been as a career engineer, which means I have the privilege of driving the truck. I'm going to quickly go through a little bit of the past since the last mill levy, why we need another mill levy, and what a no vote could mean. So, in 2009, there was a tipping point between the volunteer model and a more paid model. It was because of the community needs of Wheat Ridge, as well as the district requirements. So, in 2010, it was decided to go towards a more paid model. That led to, as well, a mill levy. And that mill levy was based on a volunteer model in 2010. It was going to be used for capital expenditures, but as I said, the needs of the community kind of pushed the department into a more paid department. So, the capital did not go where it was originally intended to go. The reasons that we need a mill levy increase, the Wheat Ridge Fire Department needs one currently, is just general operating expenditures, so we can maintain the current level of service that the community is getting. Capital improvements, replacing apparatus, and building up our reserve fund so that we are a strong department for any poor economic times that may come. Currently, the department's asking for a five-mill increase from about 7.5 to 12.5 mills. The Wheat Ridge Fire Department Board of Directors okayed a Blue Ribbon Commission panel, so we used a third party for that. That was Pinnacle Consulting Group that was used. The Blue Ribbon Panel shows that there will be solvency with this mill increase until 2020. For the public, what a five-mill increase would mean is that on a $250,000 home, that would be $8.29 a month. One thing that I'd like the public to be aware of is that Wheat Ridge currently, the fire department, has the lowest mill of any of the surrounding departments. West Metro has a 12.5 mill, and they are asking for three more in the spring. Arvada is at a 14.71, and Fairmount is at an 8.15, and they are asking for four mills in the spring. So, what could a no vote mean to the community and to the department? First of all, operation personnel will be laid off. This will lead to possible losses of apparatus and even the closure of a station, possibly. This will, in those terms, lead to a potential reduction in service and an increase in response times to whatever emergencies we may be called out on. Lastly, the ballots went out today. They should be received by the end of the week. So, vote yes on issue A, please. And please mail them back or bring them to 3880 Uppam Street, and that is by May 6th. The last thing I'd like to say is a little about the board nominees for the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. The local is supporting three nominees, Kent Johnson and Jim Johnson. They're currently serving on the board. We think they're doing a great job, and they can continue to do a great job, so we support them. And then Monica Duran, she's very active in the Wheat Ridge community, as well as the Jefferson County community. And we think that her being on the board, a new member, will bring a great new perspective to the board. So, as I said, I'm Greg Mueller from the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Our next speaker, please.
John Blanchard, B as in Boy, L-A-N-C-H-A-R-D, 3295 Kendall. And I'd like to speak to the beautification of 38th Avenue. I'd like to address the council and have everyone's attention, please. Let it be known that renewal of Wheat Ridge is a welcome necessity and long overdue. And it needs to be accomplished together as a community, mindful of what is best for their citizens and their safety. I will agree that traffic is not so bad, as it has turned into a long, quiet, steady stream of the same bumper-to-bumper commuters. This steady stream, however, does not allow for looking at anticipated shopping opportunities and/or the anticipated on-street parking. These non-commerce commuters simply travel through at the same pace, forming a solid line of traffic from light to light between Sheridan and Wadsworth. Another reason the traffic isn't so bad is that the number of cars traveling 38th has been reduced as folks are using the residential arteries to bypass 38th Avenue between Wadsworth and Sheridan. With the exception of 48th Avenue, these arteries are where Wheat Ridge citizens live, play with their children, walk and ride their bikes. The increased amount of traffic and the speed of this traffic endangers the safety of the members of the community. I don't need to, but feel I must, point out there is no commerce on residential streets, and unwanted traffic has the potential for bringing unwanted visitors. In addition, this stream of east-west traffic makes the crossing of 38th Avenue very dangerous. The only safe places for pedestrians are cars to cross or enter 38th or at the stoplights. Because of this, and the increased traffic on north-south corridors of traffic avoiding 38th Avenue, traffic buildup and congestion at these intersections is treacherous for pedestrians and difficult for traffic. It would be wise to seize the similarities between the plans for 38th Avenue and Old Town, Arvada, Golden, and Highlands, as they are all entirely different situations.
Excuse me, Ms. Blanchard, your past three minutes, are you about finished?
One sentence.
Okay.
It makes sense that if commerce is to be made on 38th Avenue, then provide the commerce and provide an avenue for the desired traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to get the projector on.
Oh. Our next speaker?
Hi, good evening. Vivian Voss, B as in Victor, O-S as in Sam, one S, 6920 West 47th Place. I have been asked to read a letter from Laslow and Ava Nagy. That is N as in Nancy, A-G-Y. They both own property on West 38th. And I will read into record. "We have a strong opposition to what is being proposed to 38th Avenue. 38th Avenue is not Boulder or Highlands and never will be, no matter how many millions are thrown at it. To propose extension of the sidewalks, as if that brings more business to 38th, is ludicrous. Not only a big burden to taxpayers in moving drainage and utilities that may take up to nine months of construction, business lost during that time, it would accomplish nothing. The original plans of beautifications such as east of Harlan with trees, bushes, lights, benches, et cetera, what a great idea. Private investment on 38th Avenue is what is now making a new destination for people, not a road diet. Some claim they are losing business because of it. Yes, we do need parking. We also do not need a tax for business to hang Christmas lights or hang baskets. The business needs to do that if they wish to attract more people. Fixing up their property is up to the business owner. It is the duty of city council that the citizens that pay the bills would agree or not agree to a proposal of this magnitude of several million dollars spent and be put to a vote on a separate ballot, and again on a separate ballot, so that it is not confusing as to what the citizen is voting on. Thank you for your attention. Signed, Laslow and Ava Nagy." And since I have a few more minutes, I'll just add my words to the city council that, yes, this does need to go to a vote of the people if any more time, effort, and money is to be spent on any street improvements to 38th Avenue. Thank you, and I have copies of the Nagy's letter to pass to you all.
Thank you. And we have a final speaker?
Good evening. Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street. I want to thank council, Madam Mayor, city staff, and all of the departments who participated in our town hall. It was a great event. There was a great turnout, lots of wonderful information available, great questions, great answers, a lot of involvement. And I would encourage you to make those kinds of opportunities more available and more frequently to our citizens. It's only through that kind of public dialogue that was engaged in there that night that I think will continue to guide us as we go forward. Certainly, we didn't all agree. You heard that, I heard that, and I know that among some of you, there's not agreement on council. But only through bringing forward those dialogues in frank, honest, and sometimes confrontational dialogue are we going to get to a place where you can guide our decisions going forward. I would encourage you as council and mayor to be honest and frank, above-board, and engage in dialogue among each other. Don't hold anything back. We're not holding anything back, as you heard, and you will continue to hear, and it needs to be, it needs to be out there. And in the end, it will be your job to decide what is best for the future of Wheat Ridge for the greater good. We are all just citizens. We aren't special interest groups. We bring forward our opinions, our visions for the future. Granted, they're not all the same, but we're all invested. You are invested, and the dialogue is really important. And I want to thank you for that opportunity again, and for the many city staff who spent their evening there, providing information. Information is what we need. Dialogue is what we need, and in the end, decisions will need to be in your hands, and I trust that you'll do the best for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any additional citizens, so let's move on. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go forward, and we will start with the consent agenda by Ms. Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight. I'm going to read them all together. Item 1A is Resolution 25-2014, approving the intergovernmental agreement of the Colorado Information Sharing Consortium. Item 1B is a motion to approve the annual support and licensing renewal for the Cartograph System in the amount of $44,290 to Cartograph Incorporated. And item number 1C, motion to award the purchase of 15 mobile data computer replacements to Counter Trade Products Incorporated in the amount of $50,385. Is a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A, 1B, and 1C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Starker? Poll the council, please, on this issue?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Let's move on to item two, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pulling up my paperwork as we speak. Council Bill 02-24, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code. Is that it? Oh.
Yes. 2-14.
About this one, all right.
Item number two.
Oh, got it. Thank you for bearing with me. Council Bill Number 01-2014, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 6405-6409 West 44th Avenue from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood, case number WZ-1401 Lombardi. The applicant is requesting approval of zoning changes from restricted to commercial use, or from restricted commercial to mixed-use. And I believe we, do we have a presentation on this?
Are you done reading?
Actually, we're having a little trouble with the projecting system. Council can see it on their screens, but it's not projected for the audience, so we went to see if we could get some batteries, so. Tell me your pleasure, please.
Do you want to do the presentation before the motion or after the motion?
Usually after the, after the motion, correct?
Oh, is the mic on at the podium?
I'll try to speak into it.
Oh, make the motion, and then, I move to approve Council Bill 01-.
We don't need to do that yet. Let's have our staff report, and this is a public meeting.
Would you like to move forward? Council can see the presentation. We apologize that staff or the audience can't, but would you like to move forward without an audience presentation? She'll verbally explain everything still.
The best I can.
Wait a second here.
Yeah, I do. I will. Right, I will. Yeah.
I think, I think we could move forward. Council can see it.
Are we going to continue on? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to start the public hearing, and if you will do your presentation, please.
Very good. Case number W, well, first of all, for the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, I do apologize about the projector not working, so if you have questions, let me know. Case number WZ-1401 is a request for approval of a zone change from restricted commercial to mixed-use commercial neighborhood on property at 6405 through 09 West 44th Avenue. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file, and packet materials in the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all appropriate noticing, publishing, and posting requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So, the property is located at 60.
Excuse me, Meredith.
Yes.
I failed to swear you in.
Okay.
And are there anyone else speaking to this item? Yes, there is. Would you please stand, sir, as well, and raise your right hand? Oh, all right. Do you swear to tell the truth as you understand the item?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
So, hopefully, hopefully the audience.
And while I'm at it, Janelle, we'd also need an ordinance number. I kind of messed up. I didn't realize there was a second, second reading on here.
This will be ordinance number 1545.
Thank you, and please go ahead, Meredith.
Sure. So, now, we've got the projector, and thank you for your help, Steve Art, and hopefully the audience can see that. The property in question, again, is comprised of three parcels at 6409 through 05 West 44th Avenue. You can see 44th Avenue runs along the southern perimeter of the property, and I would note that this is a 2012 Ariel, and you can see. feet in size and was built in nineteen sixty-seven. The eastern structure, which is sixty-four oh five, was built in nineteen sixty and is quite a bit smaller. It's about six hundred and eighty square feet in size, and both buildings are currently being used as antique stores, which are permitted in the RC Zondra District and would be permitted as well if the zoning goes through to MUC... I mean, excuse me. This is the same 2012 aerial with the zoning overlay on it, so all those different colors represent the different zonings that are in the area. The subject parcel is outlined in sort of a teal color, and it is colored orange, which stands for restricted commercial. It is surrounded by a mix of residential and commercial zonings and uses. Properties to the west, which are this pinky color, stands for neighborhood commercial. Properties to the east are a little bit darker. It's really more of a red, if you looked at the zoning map, and those would be commercial one zoning. Across Forty-Fourth to the south is a mix of restricted commercial and neighborhood commercial, and then to the north, the lighter orange color represents R-three zoning, and those are primarily multifamily properties. The property is one lot away from the city's newest park, Kendall Park, which is under construction and should be completed by early this fall, and that is in this location right here. So, just to take a glance at the frontage of the property, as indicated, there are three properties combined with two structures on them. This is a picture looking to the frontage of the western building, which is sixty-four oh nine, and then over here in the rear, you can see the sixty-four oh five structure. This is looking straight on at both properties. Again, they're both used for antique stores and are under one ownership. And then finally, this is looking back towards the northwest, again, at the frontages of those two buildings that are used as antique stores. So, the restricted commercial and the mixed-use neighborhood commercial zonings are pretty similar as far as what uses are allowed and so on and so forth, so I thought I'd just go briefly through what the differences are. Well, the restricted commercial zoning allows office service and retail. So does the mixed-use neighborhood zoning. It allows office service and retail, but it also allows residential, where the restricted commercial does not. In the restricted commercial zoning, the maximum height for all buildings is fifty feet, whereas in the mixed-use neighborhood zoning, the height limitation for structures with any sort of residential use is thirty-five feet, and then fifty feet for commercial, strictly commercial buildings. Both of the zone districts do require high-quality architecture with new construction, and that would include transparency of the buildings, a mix in materials, and so on. At this point, the property owner does not intend on expanding the building or redeveloping the site, just looking for a little bit more entitlement and some flexibility for the future. So, we went through our typical zoning process, the first step of which is to hold a neighborhood meeting. That was held on December eighteenth. We had three folks from the neighborhood show up, and discussion items included, you know, the actual zone change process, permitted and proposed uses, and then the rationale behind the zone change. We also sent out our typical referral to outside agencies, and we did not receive any concerns from agencies. Again, if the property would redevelop, we would do that again to understand what, if any, improvements would be needed to serve the property. Planning Commission reviewed the application at a public hearing held on February twentieth. They did give a recommendation of approval, and there were no... There was no testimony against the application. Again, the property owner is not proposing any changes to the property at this time. If, in fact, it would be ready for redevelopment, we would go through a site plan process administratively reviewed by staff. Let's see. Staff does support this zone change application for a variety of reasons. First of all, it's consistent with the goals and policies of and vision Wheat Ridge, which is the comprehensive plan, and Forty-Fourth is shown as a neighborhood commercial corridor transitioning into neighborhood on the north. The mixed-use neighborhood zoning will allow for a wider range of uses and may encourage investment or reinvestment in the area. It is compatible with surrounding land uses, which is a mix of residential and commercial, and there's also new development further to the east with the recent completion of the Walmart Center in the town of Lakeside. I also noticed on my way home today that there's another new pad being developed along Forty-Fourth. I don't know what that is. I assume it will be commercial. The city of Wheat Ridge continues to invest in infrastructure with the proposed development of the Kendall Park, and we believe that this could offer unique opportunities for either new commercial or residential redevelopment. And finally, the zone change evaluation criteria does support approval of this request. So that does end my presentation. I would be happy for questions.
Thank you, Meredith. Does Council have any questions of Meredith or staff? Do we have applicant testimony or comments?
We do have an applicant in the audience.
Okay. Did you want to say something, sir? Okay. No other public testimony or comments? I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're ready to entertain a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill zero-one dash two thousand fourteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at sixty-four oh five dash sixty-four oh nine West Forty-Fourth Avenue from restricted commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication because the City Council has conducted a proper public hearing, meeting all public notice requirements as required by Section twenty-six dash one oh nine of the Code of Laws.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Zatulio?
The requested rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. The requested zoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in Section twenty-six dash one twelve dash E of the Code of Laws.
Do I need to repeat the second? We still have a second for Mr. Zatulio? Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Mayor, can we confirm that the motion was read properly? Because there's actually a motion in the packet. That sounded more like the summary.
Okay, thank you.
That was recommended motion.
There's one. See, there's one, two, three choices.
Oh, it's a... There's three elements to that motion.
You feel satisfied? Okay. If there's no discussion, then let's pull the Council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number three. Council Bill zero-two dash two-zero-one-four, Mr. Starker.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I am pleased to introduce item number three. The title of this item, Council Bill number oh-zero-two-two thousand fourteen, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the subdivision regulations and making certain related amendments to Chapters two and five in association therewith, case number ZOA dash fourteen dash zero one, at issue in this matter. The proposed ordinance entails the repeal and reenactment of Article four of Chapter twenty-six for the purpose of improving the subdivision regulations and addressing these central goals. To simplify the subdivision review process, to provide more clear and contemporary design standards, to establish consistent and defensible dedication and public improvement requirements, to improve clarity and organization within the zoning code.
Do we have a staff report on this? I realize this is first reading, so I doubt that. Please go ahead with the motion, then, please.
So bear with me, I need to find the motion, Madam Mayor.
That is a thick pack.
Just before the ordinance. Right there. Okay, here we go. Recommended motion.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero-three dash two thousand one-four, an amendment and ordinance amending Section twenty-six dash one oh nine of Chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public noticing requirements on first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven o'clock P.M. in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Do I have a second? Second for Mr. Fitzgerald? I think you read the wrong one. Please pull the Council. We're having more fun tonight.
Motion carries eight...
Wrong motion. Wrong motion. Let's back up and read... Let's go back to that one.
Let's start the meeting over, maybe?
Didn't he say oh-two?
He read the public notice requirements.
Page six of the Council Action Form is where the motion is.
Thank you. I'm glad you're lucky to catch that. I don't catch it.
Davis.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero-two dash two thousand fourteen, an ordinance amending Chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the subdivision regulations and making certain related amendments to Chapters two and five in association therewith, on first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven o'clock P.M. in the City Council chambers, and that it take fifteen days... Take effect fifteen days after final publication.
I'll second that one.
Mr. Zatulio seconds the correct motion. Let's pull the Council, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries eight zero.
I think we can safely move to item number four, though. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Okay, item number four. Council Bill number oh-three dash two oh one-four, and ordinance amending Section twenty-six dash one oh nine of Chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public notice, noticing requirements, case number ZOA dash one-four dash oh-two. The issue: This ordinance amends the public noticing requirements associated with land use applications. The purpose of this amendment is to eliminate inconsistencies in the code, to improve efficiency in letter noticing, and to promote sustainable and fiscally responsible procedures.
Motion is in order.
Is a motion in order?
Yes, it is.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill oh-three dash two oh one-four, an ordinance amending Section twenty-six dash one oh nine of Chapter twenty-six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning public noticing requirements on first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M. in the City Council Chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
May I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Starker has seconded it. And once again, since this is first reading, we will go ahead and vote on it and have a discussion when we bring it up for second reading. Please pull the Council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item number five. Mr. Zatulio?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the Resolution number twenty-two dash two thousand fourteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the purpose of funding the expansion of the seniors resource center circulator bus service in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. The issue: The seniors resource center, or the SRC, operates a circulator bus service through Wheat Ridge to provide an additional transportation option for our Wheat Ridge seniors. A request was made to the City Council by the SRC in two thousand thirteen to provide funding in the amount of thirty thousand to continue the bus service at its existing level, or forty-two thousand to expand services. On June ten, two thousand thirteen, Council approved an appropriation of thirty thousand for the program. Council members Zatulio and Urban have requested the City Council consider an additional appropriation of twelve thousand dollars to expand the bus service. And I wanted to also mention that we have two speakers here from the senior resource center, John and Hank, to answer any questions. Is a motion in order?
A motion is in order. I'll find out.
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-two dash two thousand fourteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the purpose of funding the expansion of the senior resource center circulator bus service in the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a second? Do we have discussion, or...
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I think John and Hank wanted to answer some questions and ask first.
Did our guests wish to speak to the motion, or did you want to just wait and see if there were questions asked of you? You were... All right, you're available for questioning, in other words. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Starker.
I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion, if I may.
Certainly.
And I will pass out this amendment. And I would like to preface this by saying that I really appreciate what the senior resource center does for our communities. It's a proud neighbor that we have in District One, and they do great work. However, there's another group in Wheat Ridge that does great work also, and that's the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, and I know that we have provided funding in our annual budget thus far for the senior resource center, and I would like to make the motion... So I would move to strike the words "the expansion of the senior resource center circulator bus service" and replace it with the words "a contract employee for the Wheat Ridge Historical Society," such that the motion would read, "I move to approve Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-fourteen, a resolution amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the purpose of funding a contract employee for the Wheat Ridge Historical Society in the amount of twelve thousand dollars."
Okay. If I'm correct, the way we handle this...
You need a second for the motion to amend.
First, you need a second for this amendment. Do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Mr. Fitzgerald has seconded the amendment, and now we're going to vote.
Discussion on the amendment first.
I'm sorry. Yes, let's go ahead and vote on the amendment then.
Discussion on the amendment. I assume there will be discussion on the amendment.
Madam Mayor, I will discuss this. The Wheat Ridge Historical Society is in need of a contract employee to work with their current members in the society, to organize and particularly computerize the historical records that we have in our city. These records, and more importantly, the historical memory of the citizens who participated in the development of our community in the early years of our region are in peril of being lost as time passes. Also, we're coming upon in a few years our fiftieth anniversary as the founding of our city, and I think we will be benefited greatly in that celebration if we're able to have accurate and fruitful historical records. So, once again, I want to thank the senior resource center for all the work that they do in our city. They do a great job, but I think this is an opportunity to, in these budget times, to have another organization that we can support.
Mr. Zatulio?
Madam Mayor, at this point, since John and Hank were here and they were going to explain what the twelve thousand dollars extra would be for the senior resource center, I would ask that they would be allowed to speak under this item to explain what the twelve thousand dollars was for, what the service entails.
Could you give us your full name?
Yes, my name is John Zabawa, Z-A-B-A-W-A. I'm president and CEO of the seniors resource center, and with me is Hank Broxma, Director of Transportation Services. I really want to just take this opportunity to recognize and thank Mayor Jay and members of the City Council for the support that you have garnered to the seniors resource center. of the City Council for the support that you have garnered to the seniors resource center, and I think more importantly, your recognition and commitment to the older citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge. And you're, you're well aware that Wheat Ridge has a high concentration of older adults. We anticipate that number is going to continue to grow. So I think that you really have shown some vision and foresight in creating this transportation system to really provide service to individuals that were without transportation before. We have a number of congregate senior living facilities within the city that prior to the circulator bus had very limited access to transportation. So this only enriches their lives. It, it really creates a more supportive environment for the residents of the city of Wheat Ridge, a place to age, a place to, to feel engaged in community life. I think that the, that the circulator bus service has certainly been well utilized, continues to increase. You're, you're well aware of the effort and our partnership with Jewish, Jewish Services and the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, Health Set. So we've conducted two basically community meetings. The first one held at Yold Firehouse. We had about 30 older city residents attend that meeting. There was about 50 at the Wheat Ridge Town Center last week. The next one is, is going to be held at Highland West. We're anticipating a big turnout. What this means is that people are becoming more aware of, of the services and resources that are available to them in their community. And so with that, we would certainly anticipate a continued increase in demand, and transportation really rises to the top as one of the greatest needs that older adults experience in order to, to feel a sense of independence, to continue to be, you know, fully engaged in community life and, and to enhance their, their quality of life. Hank Broxma can certainly address, you know, the, the specifics as it relates to the level of service we have provided and the, the service that is, is provided through these various senior living facilities. So Hank?
Hi, I'm Hank Broxma, last name B-R-A-A-K-S-M-A. I'm the Director of Transportation Services, so I'm the guy that puts the wheels on the road. Last year, 63 unique riders utilized the senior shuttle. That will probably grow. There has been a recent presentation to the Town Center, which is going to be an added stop. It's, I think, got 85 apartments in it, and we're going to be visiting the towers next week, again in conjunction with the NORC project with Jewish Family Services. We have done as many as two stops daily there when we run the circulator. We have a vehicle, usually a 12-passenger vehicle that arrives there. People don't have to call ahead, they just have to show up at the prescribed time. They know where they're going. They get two hours to be with themselves, doing their shopping in Wheat Ridge, and there have been times where we've had to send the bus back for more people because it's been full the first stop. So you're currently purchasing roughly six hours per week. The additional money would add another two hours per week of that service. I hope you consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. Any questions from council? Or discussion?
I have a question about the, the grant, the NORC grant. Were any of those funds going to be used for transportation?
There has been some money set aside for transportation. It would not be for the same type of transportation. This is a fairly unique system in, in that it's a fixed route, so the people know the bus will be there at a specific time, at the specific day. The NORC dollars are going to be focused more on social rec activities and getting people to groups, going to recreational activities, so it's not shopping within Wheat Ridge. It's going to be recreation and classrooms.
And will that begin this year, or do you know when that will begin?
That has started, yes.
Okay.
So I have just a couple of questions. So for clarification, so you had said 63 riders over the last year? So 63, you said, unique?
63 unique riders, 63 individuals.
So 63 individuals utilize this service in the city of Wheat Ridge?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then I have just a couple of other questions, and I apologize, because you probably didn't have these questions, I wish you didn't have these questions, ahead of time, so I don't know if you'll have the answers or not. So as far as other contributing cities, do other cities contribute, and what is their type of contribution, their number of riders in comparison? I mean, if you're looking at 63 riders per, you know, and the dollars contributed, do you have that breakdown at all, as far as from Lakewood or Arvada, other cities using the services?
Wheat Ridge falls roughly where it should, which would be the third heaviest user. It is not the third largest fund there, and I really don't want to get into detail city by city. You know, each city contributes dollars.
I guess, I guess my question is not as much to details, but in comparison, does Wheat Ridge contribute equally as far as with its users to other cities?
Just one point of clarification. When Hank was referring to the 63 unique riders, that this is just utilization of the circulator system. So, so far more Wheat Ridge residents use our transportation services than the 63 he was referring to.
Okay, that's.
So, so by, by, with regards to your specific question, you know, the city of Arvada is, is contributing four times what the city of Wheat Ridge is contributing, specific for transportation service.
And their rider diff, is probably different, their ridership is probably different as well?
It's similar. It does not have the fixed route. The total ridership for Wheat Ridge in the last year was roughly 257 unique riders. The additional rides outside of the circulator cost SRC roughly $100,000 to provide, and of course, we do leverage grant funding, and dollars, any dollars that come from local jurisdictions helps leverage grant funding. So basically, you get $6 for every dollar you invest.
Okay. Then I, I just have one other question, because I just think of, as having a, a father that needs dialysis, if there's ever time he needs a ride, it could be a good use to him, and I think in his situation, a lot of it is just about the ride, and, you know, he'd be happy to donate and, and do those types of things. Is there any type of process that you all use as far as, of course, I work for a not-for-profit hospital, so foundations and that type of thing are always in the back of my head, but is there any type of programs that you guys kick off as far as, I know it might be awkward and difficult if you're picking somebody up to say, hey, would you like to donate, but is there any kind of mailing list? Do you have a list of, of your, your riders and those types of things that you say, hey, here's our annual campaign to, to support our, our community services? Do you have those things in place?
Yes, we do, and actually, we're required by Older Americans Act, ask for contributions. We're required to post that in our vehicles. We put it in our twice-annual newsletter. SRC as an agency outside of transportation does an annual giving campaign, so it's out there all the time.
And is it an active, more of an active mailing type of giving campaign, or is it just a brochure in your, in, in your?
We utilize every form we can, and I can proudly say that SRC Transportation brings in a higher level of donations than any other community provider in the area.
Okay, great.
You know, just to add to that point, and, and that is, we really focus on educating the writer as to what it costs to provide that transportation. So, so it's, it's all about awareness, making them realize that, you know, that there are a lot of costs associated, you know, with, with purchasing the vehicles, to, you know, hiring the drivers, training the drivers, to the, the liability insurance on, on each vehicle, the maintenance, and, and so they, they become well aware of the value that they are receiving, and I think that really helps to stimulate their contribution and helping to support the service.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I don't have a question, but I'd like to speak to the amendment motion. I'd like to support Bud's amendment. If we don't do this, the senior resource bus will continue to run at the same level as it does now, and they are a worthy recipient. I, you know, that's true. But when we are balancing available funds out, I think the Historical Society, Society almost falls into the category of an emergency, because we do need to protect these records before the custodians that are currently managing the records and who do this by their, by knowledge rather than an organized computer system. If they would no longer be doing that, we might lose valuable information. So I think it's important that we provide someone who can computerize their records.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Zatulio.
Since Mr. Urban and I sponsored this, I want to address some of the comments. First of all, I think if you remember back when we first had our first city council meeting, I had made a motion to put the Historical Society on a study session, and that failed. So I'm a little concerned now why all of a sudden this is an emergency to amend this ordinance. I think they're both worthy programs, and I think that I would support $12,000 to the Historical Society, but I also support $12,000 to the senior circulator bus, because they're supporting our seniors in the city of Wheat Ridge, and this bus is for seniors in Wheat Ridge, and they shop in Wheat Ridge. It doesn't go to Arvada or Lakewood or anywhere else. My concern is that you've heard the data about Jefferson County and the city of Wheat Ridge being increased senior population, and we have folks where this bus will go pick them up and take them to shop and work and play in the city of Wheat Ridge. And I think that what I would support is voting down this amendment for the Historical Society right now, but then to support a motion to bring forth a, a funding mechanism for the Historical Society under elected officials matters, but I think we're mixing apples and oranges here. So my, my hope was that council would not vote for this amendment, keep the motion for the seniors resource center whole, and then maybe support a motion elected officials matters that Bud could bring forth that would also bring a funding mechanism to the Historical Society, because I think both of them are worthy. I think if we're really going to support seniors in the city, based on the data that we've read, we have a staff employee who's getting an award for supporting seniors. I think we should support that effort and increase this. Like John said, the hours will go from six hours a week to eight hours a week. Is that correct? And we're, we're going to have more seniors moving in at the 38th and Kipling when that project is up and running. We have it 44th and up, and they're looking at right now. So I think it's a worthy cause to vote for both and not support the amendment at this time, but to support amendment later on for the funding at a later date to come forth as soon as possible for the Historical Society.
Mr. Christie had asked. Just quickly, just as a mayor pro tem, I don't believe that the, your, the, your motion was voted down. I think it was, that it was already on the list of study session items. Isn't that correct, Patrick?
Correct. There was consensus during the budget hearing process to discuss Historical Society support in a future study session.
So I, I don't think that it was voted down. I just think we had already said, oh, that's already slated on the list, and I do think additional discussions is, is slated for a, a future study session. And, and just one other thing, I do, we tend to have competing priorities all the time, and it just seems even in our last study session, talking about, you know, speed signs in neighborhoods and lights in neighborhoods and alleys and, and those types of things. So, you know, I do, I do feel that we're in a situation where we do have to kind of spread the wealth in, in these situations, and, and I do appreciate everything that the senior resource center does in the circulating bus, and I definitely see the need for it. And I do think, you know, with the 38th, or 38th and Kipling, which is due, would be the next budget cycle, actually, and what happens with the Town Center and, and additional developments there, that this is something that could be addressed in the future, but I do feel, you know, we did what we could in our budget in 2013.
Is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
I think that it's inappropriate to pit these two great causes against each other, given that that is the case and that we're asked to choose. I would choose to honor the living residents of Wheat Ridge versus remembering the past residents of Wheat Ridge or doing more work to consider the, the history of Wheat Ridge. I would rather look at our residents today and say, we're here to help you and serve you. One of my neighbors is a Korean War veteran without personal transportation, and without a bus or transportation like this, he is forced to walk at close to 85 years of age. And so I know that he is not the only resident of Wheat Ridge that benefits from a service like this, and therefore I would be voting against this amendment. Number one, because I think it's inappropriate to pit these two great causes against each other, and number two, if I had to choose, I would choose to honor our seniors versus remembering the past.
Well, we got a lot of discussion on this tonight. Ms. Lyngworthy.
So first of all, thank you, gentlemen. I've always, always, always supported what you do for our citizens, and without you, our citizens would be in a worse place, so thank you for that. So what I'm saying has nothing to do with that at all, because I, I do, I honestly am so grateful that, that you are there to keep them from falling through the gaps. So, and, and having some, some previous information on this matter, I guess I'd like to try to kind of give some of what I remember from past. It has only been in the last few years that this funding has actually come from our general fund. Prior to that, this was money that came to us through the CDBG grant, and so this was, this was a service we were able to provide without really impacting our general fund. We were able to leverage money we've gotten and to provide a service to our citizens that, that really is a needed service. To me, this kind of, I'm not necessarily in support of adding them more right now. What, what this tells me is we need to have a better, a bigger discussion, and part of that discussion will be coming up in May with the aging well. We had a group of citizens who have really worked hard on what do our citizens need, our aging community needs, and where, where could some of our funding be best suited to help them out? As far as, as your, your neighbor, Mr. Urban, the circulator bus really takes off from very specific points, so if he isn't over at the Highlands, or if he isn't over at, I'm trying to imagine all the, there's, there's like three spots. So unfortunately, it doesn't, us putting more money, it isn't going to mean that this bus is going to go around our neighborhoods and pick people up, which, which may be more of a service than this specific one would be. But I think that we really do need to talk about this, a long-term funding mechanism on this one, because in the past, it was covered by grants, which made it a very easy item to cover, and now this is coming out general fund. And what is an appropriate level, and once we decide that appropriate level, staying with that, and this was discussed during the budget process, $30,000 was what was agreed upon, and because at this moment, the numbers are, the ridership's going down, but it, as Hank has always said, it kind of does a very sick, you know, it has a very circular, so right now they, they might be down, but tomorrow they can be going back up again. Correct? And we don't really know how it's going to go, and so I, I just, I think that we need to look at more of that long-term funding.
Mr. Pond.
Thank you. I'm just going to speak to the amendment, and I'll hold off on the main motion. I appreciate Councilmember Starker's motion, I think, and, and Ms. Davis's clarification that, that we still have a pending discussion on this. I, I, I do agree with the rationale and look forward to that discussion, but until we have that discussion, I, I will actually vote no on this, on this amendment, and I'll hold off my other comments until we get back to the main motion.
Any further discussion, or can we move to the question, which is this amendment? We do, Ms. Wooden?
Yes, I wanted to say it's unfortunate that it appears that these two items may be pitted against each other, although I don't believe that was the intention. They really are two separate items, and unfortunately, it appears in the motion they might be pitted against each other. I don't see it that way myself. I see it as one motion for additional funds to expand ridership on the circulator bus, and a separate motion to add $12,000 for the Historical Society. I was not on the council when the budget was approved last year, but I do remember the discretion came up about adding money for the Historical Society, which I very much support. So however we work these motions, I believe that Historical Society is an important issue that we have. that we have to bring forward.
One quick question.
Let's, let's go for the question. I think we're ready to.
I had a question from the staff.
Okay.
Mr. Goff, how much money right now is in the unallocated reserve for the City of Wheat Ridge? A rough number?
Unrestricted is about 4.9 million.
So we have roughly $4.9 million available and we're basically discussing and arguing on to continue this for $12,000. I don't see why the Historical Society and the Senior Circulator Bus both can't be funded with the, out of the unallocated. And I, I, what I remember is I made two motions, they both were killed. Then we got an email later on that said the Historical Society was on the agenda anyway. But I don't understand the emergency now when this is, I've tried to discuss this before and it was, both of them were voted down on the first or second council meeting. So we're arguing over $12,000 when we have a $4.9 million unallocated funds.
Okay. Are we ready for the question? The question is, you're voting on the amendment that has been proposed. And shall I read that again? I move to approve Resolution Number 22-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for purpose of funding a contract employee for the Wheat Ridge Historical Society in the amount of $12,000. You ready to pull the console?
The motion fails three to five with council members Wooden, Langworthy, Pond, Urban, and Tuttulio voting no.
Let's move on to the main motion then. Do you want to read that again, Mr. Tuttulio? I think you read it originally.
Yes.
Or do we need to read it again? Do we?
No, you, you don't. I mean, the, the amendment was defeated, so you're back to the original motion. Doesn't have to be reread.
So, and we've had a second on it? So let's.
So if there's further discussion though on the motion, I don't know if that ever took place.
Further discussion? Just go ahead, Mr. Pond.
So I think everyone is unified in appreciation of the services. I do recall us struggling with many of these things during the budget process. And so while this may be a small change, we certainly were in a seemingly precarious position when we were trying to argue over several of these items towards the end of the, of the budget cycle. And we had come to the conclusion at that time that there was a number of things. This is one of them, $30,000 to this, to this that, that we approved. So I, I do think we have more conversation to, to have about some of the other things like the Historical Society that were pending conversation. And so I will not support the expansion. Again, that's not to say that I don't support the service in our current obligation.
Mr. Tuttulio.
I just wanted to address some comments. I agree that in the past, the council has argued over minute amounts of money when we have almost $5 million in the unallocated fund. And I agree with Mr. Pond, in the past, he has said that why quibble and argue over such small amounts of money when you can do so much good with that small amount of money? If we have an opportunity to increase this service from six hours to eight hours a week and service the seniors that are in our community now who need this transportation and expand it for $12,000, I think we should do it. Because I think it's, that's what we're here for is to support our community, young and old. And I also agree that at the end of this meeting, I would hope that we could actually bring forth another resolution that would support the Historical Society because that's supporting another segment of the population that's been underserved for very many years. So I would hope that we could vote, vote for both. I don't think $24,000 total is going to break a $5 million unallocated budget. And I think we have to think big picture and long term and worry about the million and $2 million, $3 million. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I have a question of you guys. You've quoted how many unique riders you have? How many total rides did you provide?
That's four We All Rides for Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge residents.
That's a Circulator Bus only? That's all rides? Okay.
That was all rides, yes.
Are we ready for the question? Can we pull the console then?
The main motion fails three to five with council members Wooden, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, and Davis voting no.
Thank you. Can we move on then to item number, I've probably lost it, but six. Item number six. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor J. Resolution Number 21-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount not to exceed 1.5 million to pay down a renewal Wheat Ridge loan for the property at Town Center North. So the issue is on April 17th, 2008, just for a little background, Renewal Wheat Ridge obtained $3.285 million loan from First Bank of Wheat Ridge to purchase the property southeast, at the southeast corner of Wadsworth and 44th Avenue for the remediation of blight. The loan has an outstanding balance of 2.220 million and, well, 2,000, or $2,220,748 as of March 27th with a maturity date of April 15th, 2014. Staff has been negotiating with First Bank to reduce the principal and interest on the loan by paying down the loan with funds held as security by First Bank against the loan. A supplemental budget appropriation in the amount not to exceed 1.5 million is requested from the general fund restricted reserves for the loan pay down and fees associated with the new loan. The balance of the new loan will now total 780,000 and will not require cash security from the city as collateral. Renewal Wheat Ridge will continue monthly debt service payments to the new loan of approximately 8,500 per month until the balance of the loan can be paid from future land sales from the 44th Avenue project, Wadsworth project, which hopefully will be soon. Recommendation, staff recommends approving a supplemental budget appropriation for the following reasons. The loan is due on April 15th, 2014. That's tomorrow. Renewal Wheat Ridge does not have the funds to make the balloon payment. The anticipated future land sales will not net enough revenues to repay the loan in its entirety. The loan pay down in the amount not to exceed 1.5 million will come from restricted general fund reserves, which will not impact the city's minimum 17% reserve policy. And the renegotiated loan amount, option two, will decrease Renewal Wheat Ridge monthly debt service, providing additional revenues for other urban renewal projects. Is a motion in order? Or any questions? Sorry.
We have to make a motion first.
I'll make a motion first.
Is there any staff?
In a second.
Staff?
Typically, you take a motion first, get that second, and then you start with staff and discussion.
Okay. So I recommend, I move to recommend, or I move to approve Resolution Number 20-2014, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2014 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount not to exceed 1.5 million to pay down Renewal Wheat Ridge loan for the property at Town Center North.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Tuttulio seconded. Questions of the council or staff? Questions of either the, you know, of staff from the council?
Or discussion?
A hush falls off. Discussion? Mr. Starker?
Mr. Goff, I noticed on the financial impact portion of our packet, a sentence that says, "A subsequent appraisal on March 2014 indicated a lower property value than the existing appraisal. This lower valuation devalued the property from 877.5 to 780." Do you, is, do you know why that would be? We've, we've put a building on this property or is this a non, a non-built-on property?
Correct. This is the vacant properties that the URA still owns. It doesn't include the Wazee Town Center apartments. And 877.5 was, yeah, was a, a, a numbers that the bank used from a, a previous appraisal that was done a couple of years ago. We had a new appraisal done to get the value of, of the property so we could use that as collateral. So they were estimating 877, but once the appraisal came in, it was only 780 for the two vacant properties.
So you don't think the construction we did on that corner decreased our property value, do you?
No. Unfortunately, you know, we purchased those properties in 2008, right before the, yeah, it wasn't a great time to purchase, unfortunately. I think it's turned it into a great project, but we did purchase at a high time and, and the property value has been decreasing a little bit.
Any other discussion? Are we ready to pull the console? Please do so.
Vote again, please. Motion carries eight zero.
Move on to item number seven, please?
Scared me a minute on that one. Okay. Everybody pull out your paper, your, your checkbooks.
You know, there is a blood moon this evening. I think that's what's causing all the technical.
I thought we were all going to have to pull out our checkbooks. Okay. The next one is Resolution Number 23-2014, a resolution concerning the proposed redevelopment at the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street and the proposed incurrence of a loan by the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority to be secured by certain tax increment revenues generated by the project declaring the city council's present intent to appropriate funds to replenish the reserve fund securing such loan if necessary and authorizing a redevelopment agreement, a cooperation agreement, and other related actions in connection with. Okay. So I'm going to go through, do you want to speak to it or you want me just to read the issue?
I can speak to it. It might be, it might be more.
More user-friendly.
Concise and user-friendly. Thank you. Do we have a mo, do we have a motion on the table?
You can speak first and we can have a.
Okay. I'll speak first.
Okay. Let's have a motion.
All righty then. I rec, I move to approve Resolution Number 23-2014, a resolution concerning the proposed redevelopment to the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street and the proposed incurrence of a loan by the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority to be secured by certain tax increment revenues generated by the project declaring the city council's present intent to appropriate funds to replenish the reserve fund securing such a loan if necessary and authorizing a redevelopment agreement, a cooperation agreement, and other related actions in connection with.
Second.
Bless you.
You, you bet. Thank you, Mayor, council. Very, very pleased to be bringing this resolution forward to city council tonight for consideration. The resolution that you see in front of you, the, the title is, is very long, so let me explain a little bit and break it down. And also, we do have gentlemen from the, the development company here tonight and also the city's bond attorney here to answer any questions. I'll introduce those folks in, in a minute. Tonight's resolution is approving a redevelopment agreement with Millennium Venture Group or MVG and the Renewal Wheat Ridge for a 6.3 acre mixed-use development at the southwest corner of 38th and Kipling. The development will include 33,000 square feet of retail, which will be anchored by a Sprouts Farmers Market, and also a 64-unit senior care facility. City is proposing an economic development incentive package of $3 million. That will be broken down into a million-dollar direct cash contribution from the city's reserves, which you'll, will decide after this item, it's the next resolution. And also, the Renewal Wheat Ridge is obtaining a loan from a bank for $2.6 million to net $2 million in cash for a total of $3 million. These funds will be used for public improvements associated with the project and they will be drawn down from the developer as expenses are incurred. You also, this resolution also approves a cooperation agreement between the city and Renewal Wheat Ridge. The cooperation agreement sets forth the use of property and sales tax increment from the property. So new, new property tax and new sales tax that will be generated from this redevelopment, those funds will be used to pay down the loan that Renewal Wheat Ridge will obtain. So that is in part of the, or a cooperation agreement. The loan term is for 10 years, but we anticipate that there will be excess revenues generated from the site to pay off the loan sooner. A reserve fund will be established as part of the loan, which will be used to pay debt service if, for some reason incremental property and sales tax are not enough to pay the debt service in any coming year. So city tonight, as part of this resolution, is declaring its non-binding intent to replenish the reserve fund if that reserve fund is used. If the city does replenish the reserve fund, the city would be reimbursed with future property and sales tax increment off the site. So that's really, very shortly, what you are approving in, in this action. And as I mentioned, we have several folks here who will be able to answer questions if you need to. With MVG, we have John Rankin, H. McNeesh, and Bruce O'Donnell. And then also Sally Tasker is here, who represents the city as our bond counsel. So with that, we'll take some questions.
Madam Mayor, I'm comfortable with the information that's presented by city staff in the packet.
Thank you, council. Thank you for attending, even though we didn't have any questions for you. You must be feeling very confident.
Yeah. Their, their, next item is related to this project also.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Number 24-2014, a resolution amending the 2014 fiscal year general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount not to exceed $1 million for the purposes of funding public improvements in association with the redevelopment of the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street. At issue is the items that were already discussed. If a motion is ordered, I will place it.
Please do so.
I move to approve Resolution Number 24-2014, a resolution amending the 2014 fiscal year general fund budget reflecting the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the purposes of funding public improvements in association with the redevelopment of the southwest corner of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street.
And do I have a second?
Second. I'll second.
Not sure whether this is an appropriate question, but since we have most of the folks here, I'm, I'm curious as to the, how the process is going and the scheduling, if that's an appropriate thing to ask as we move forward with securing these funds for you.
Sure.
McNeesh or John?
My name is H. McNeesh. I'm the director of planning with MVG Development. We're at 1509 York Street, Denver 80206. I, I would say that we're tracking as planned for, for the project. We've been in the process with Ken Johnstone and his team, with our plat, and also with our site development plan. We're in fact bringing our plat in front of the Planning Commission this Thursday and then expect to be before this group in May, which is on target for when we started the process, call it 60 days ago. It of course goes further back than that, but as far as getting into the, into the review system. So I would say that we've worked hard with our team to achieve all the tasks with both those documents. And we're looking forward to going through the public approval process on them shortly.
Just one quick thing. With a projected January twenty-fifteen open date for Sprouts, right? Am I allowed to say that? January twenty-fifteen. So that's, uh...
I'm sorry.
Close, yeah, I did say it now, but...
Yes, January twenty...
I guess we talked about an urban renewal, so it was already, uh, public information, but, uh, yeah, so that's exciting too, 'cause it's right around the corner.
It is, it is. Thank you, we are too.
Motion carries eight zero.
Um, a reconsideration of appointment to the Planning Commission District Four. Um, I might make a motion, and then I would like to bring some discussion after them. Okay.
Just a matter of procedure, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, but on this one, I really do need to be able to sort of walk through the procedure a little bit before...
Okay, good.
...you take motions. Obviously, the, the substantive issue, you understand, 'cause I've described it to you, and it's in the, in the council action form. Uh, procedurally, before you can move to, to do anything substantive on this, you need to reconsider the appointment. Uh, that's a motion to reconsider, it needs to be made by someone that voted with the prevailing side, meaning someone that voted for the appointment, um, last time.
Not myself, though.
Pardon?
I can do that correct.
Did you vote for the appointment? Yes. Uh, so, so that happens, that motion passes, uh, we'll assume. The next motion, which is also kind of procedural, is then to rescind that appointment, and that can be made by anyone. Assuming that motion passes, then you've brought yourself back in time to a point where there's a vacancy, a District Four vacancy, on, uh, the Planning Commission, and then you, you have a series of alternate motions that I provided for you, and you can sort of have out those in whatever discussion you want. But to sort of position yourselves to have that discussion, you need to take those first two motions, that, motions one and two, that I've put in the packet, if, 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 uh, you would like to do that.
Yes.
Yeah, it's motion number one, on the second page.
I move to reconsider the appointment of Lisa Hollenbeck to the Planning Commission.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Detulio voting no.
I move to rescind the appointment of Lisa Hollenbeck to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Now I'll make the third motion, and then I would like to discuss.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Detulio voting no.
I move to re-advertise for applicants for membership on the Planning Commission from District Four.
Oh, second.
And then I'd like to discuss. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'd like to appoint Ray Mays to the Planning Commission for District Four.
You have a second?
We need a second.
Second.
It's probably a substitute motion, 'cause it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a completely different motion, but that's fine, it's perfectly appropriate. Absolutely, yeah, now's the time.
Well, there is, on my part, um, and, and while I appreciate Mr. Mays' application to this, this position, um, and I, as I appreciate all board members who, who do apply to our commissions, um, the Planning Commission is, is a bit different than most commissions. It, it requires a certain level of knowledge, they're, they're expected to make, um, decisions that, that have a greater impact. Um, not that the planning, or the Parks and Rec Commissions don't have an impact, or, um, any of the other ones that we do have, haven't, they do, but to me, and at least for, for us, um, what we had was an applicant that really does want to, to help with this community, and that's fabulous. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that there, I thought. Um, what we also have is another applicant who is, is seeking a degree currently in land use and urban development, which is very specific to what that Planning Commission does, um, and has, to me, has more, more experience in that matter. Um, and, so I guess for me, I don't support, um, putting Mr. Mays in the position, mostly because I really want to find a, an applicant that is experienced, has knowledge in that area, and can bring that to our Planning Commission, so that we're really getting our best decisions made.
Hi, Madam Mayor. I guess the, the question I have for Councilmember Langworthy is, if this was such a, um, critical appointment for the city, why weren't there other applicants sought after or recruited from your district prior to the, this time and place? Why, why were there no other applicants to this position than, if he's willing to serve, why won't we allow him to serve?
Um, first of all, we have been trying to find other applicants, he wasn't the only one. It wasn't like we got one and said, "Well, we don't want him, and we're not gonna do anything else." We have been looking. Um, no, I, I, I have something else to say. I'm, I'm just trying to say it in, in the most respectful way possible, because I re, I do truly appreciate everybody's position on our boards and commissions. Without them, we couldn't get the work done that we need to get done. And that being said, um, Mr. Mays has applied for another position. There was requirements for that position, and he, he, uh, declined to do the work for that, um, position. To me, it doesn't say that what he, you know, that, that he may have done anything bad, just for me, it's very important for the, the people who we appoint take very seriously everything that, that is required of them. And for, for me, that was, um, in the end, why I really felt like we should find someone different for the position.
I'd like to ask our attorney, um, are we required by code to, uh, do this? Or, uh, do we have the right to, uh, allow, uh, Ms. Hollenbeck to continue in this position?
Pardon me, you, you, the, the code, it's, it's in the, in the packet, uh, requires you to appoint from the district, unless, and as the code states, "After reasonable advertisement, no applications are received for residents within the district, you can go outside the district." So a couple of things here. Um, the base requirement, of course, is to appoint from within the district. If you don't get applications, it doesn't say what kind or nature, just applications within the district, you can go outside after you have advertised. Uh, the code does require that there be eight members, and it requires that, that those eight members be equally apportioned amongst, amongst the districts, with this one exception that's on the, on the, in the staff report here. So at some point, council will have to, can't leave it, in my opinion, the, the, the position vacant forever, but it's, so at some point, it'll have to appoint, but I believe the, the power to appoint includes the power, if it wishes, to decline to appoint from a given slate of candidates, and I think that means that you try again. So, uh, maybe another way of saying is, the fact that you have a District Four applicant does not require you, and this, the only applicant, does not require you to appoint that person. If you don't, then it remains vacant, but you have an obligation to continue to advertise and to bring applicants forward so that you can appoint.
Well, I don't know Mr. Mays, and, um, I know that he's tried to contact some folks from the city, and they've not called him back. I have no idea why he applied, but whether it's Brittany Fitzsimmons, who got voted down on, by my mates' emotions, or Dan Bradford, they deserve a chance to, to prove themselves. And before you can say, "Well, he, um, applied for another board and failed to, not, not to do it," you don't know until he tries it. You know, I've seen this happen to Mr. Urban, when he applied for the Housing Authority several times, council shot him down because of whatever reason. I hope this isn't a reason other than you don't know him, but, um, I think he deserves a, at least a chance to serve, that's why I made the motion for him. If he doesn't work out, you can take him off, just like you took off Tracy Gilner, because she didn't show up. There is, there is rules in there for that, too. So if a, if a person wants to serve, male or female, white or black or Hispanic, and they haven't done anything wrong, they should have a chance to serve the community and give it a chance. So I will be supporting Mr. Mays for this appointment.
Madam Mayor, who was the, who was the second on that motion? Thank you. Motion fails two to six, with Councilmembers Wooton, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, Davis, and Starker voting no.
To re-advertise for applicants for membership on the Planning Commission from District Four.
And you were the second on that?
Oh, sorry.
Was she the second? Okay. I hope I... Uh, motion carries six to two, with Councilmembers Urban and Detulio voting no.
Uh, just a few updates, um, for council and, um, our citizens. Um, I'd like to announce that, um, we'll have new, um, building division hours, um, effective May fifth. Um, currently, we're open eight to five. We're gonna move those back an hour, seven AM to four, um, PM. That, uh, is more in line with, um, the contractor's schedule. Um, we're, um, we're getting, um, positive feedback already from contractors, that they know that these hours are coming, so, um, if it doesn't work for some reason, we can always, um, switch back, but we're gonna, May fifth, switch to seven AM to four PM. Um, just a heads up for everybody, we will be testing our early warning sirens, um, on Wednesday at, uh, eleven AM, so, um, if you hear those sirens going off, it's just a test. Just a test. Um, then I had one more update to... Oh, um, also, um, the, Arvada Community Food Bank, um, has voted to expand their service, um, to include all of Wheat Ridge. Originally, they just came down to, um, Thirty-Eighth Avenue, um, from the north, and they're gonna extend it all the way down to Twenty-Sixth Avenue, so, um, our, the, Arvada Community Food Bank is going to expand their services, um, for the entirety of Wheat Ridge, so, it's good news.
City attorneys matters.
Not tonight, thanks.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City treasurer? Mr. Detulio?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that the Wheat Ridge Fire District will be sending out ballots today, and they're, you're voting on board members, and a, um, funding increase for that, for the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. Ballots are, we're mailing ballots, you should get them today or this week, and then they're due by May sixth. You could do, like, the gentleman said earlier, you can deliver them to Thirty-eight, Eighty-Up Em', or you can mail them back in, but that is for the Wheat Ridge Fire District, not the City of Wheat Ridge, that's a spring election. Um, also, I wanted to, uh, ask, Mr. City Attorney, when were you planning on bringing the changes to the council rules?
Thanks, I appreciate that. I did the council action forum, I think, yesterday, they're on the agenda for the study session, uh, in a week from now, so, to, a week from tonight, be on that study session.
Thanks.
And you'll get a, did a redline version, in fact, this gives me the chance to explain when you see that study session packet, the redline version shows changes. It doesn't show reorganization, where I moved a rule from one place to another. I did a bunch of, kind of, that kind of editing, I invented a numbering system. If I had shown all of those changes, then the whole thing would have been redlined, it would have been impossible to see what the real, you know, changes were that you directed. Uh, so that's, that's why it's a little bit of a cleaned-up redline, but I, I figured you'd wanna see it in that form.
Thanks. And then also, I was gonna ask the city attorney, our city manager, uh, have you heard when the, um, International Property Maintenance Code changes will be coming forward to council, or are we still working on that? What's the status of that?
I don't know. Let me, um, I'll check on that for you, and I'll send an email out to council.
Okay, and then the last one was, uh, before the election, there was some issues about, um, sales tax review by individuals, and I believe the city attorney had indicated that, um, you were gonna recommend some changes to the code on sales tax review by individuals. Was that an administrative change, or was that a city council change?
That'll be a city council change, uh, and, uh, Sales Tax Division has, uh, put together a, a short list of probably, uh, uh, maybe ten different code, code changes that are necessary to do streamlining, and you know, you'll learn as you go, especially in the sales tax code, there are just little things, and they've put together a list of those, uh, and we're reviewing them now, and we promise to get our review back to Sales Tax Division by the, like, twenty seconds, so a week from tomorrow. Once we, in fact, they've done pretty good work on language, so we're pretty close to language. It'd be my intention, after they've seen our comments on their proposal, just turn it into an ordinance, and, uh, start the ordinance through the process in, in front of, in front of you. Uh, I, I wanna think a little bit about whether it needs to go to a study session, I'm inclined to say no. It's pretty, they're pretty straightforward, and I think the council action memo can appropriately describe those changes and get them to you.
Thanks. Um, and also, I had con, I had some contact from one or two board members from the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. They're in the middle of a, uh, request for information on the Fruitdale School, and a couple of the board members was interested in talking to city council at a joint study session with them, especially 'cause we have a new council, to talk about the Fruitdale School. It's on the agenda, I know, for future, but, um, one of the discussions was if the city would be even interested in using that as the, as, as the Parks Master Plan to replace it, Anderson Building with the Fruitdale School, and look at grants for remodeling. So I didn't know when you were planning on putting that on the, the schedule as mayor pro tem for the, uh, council to see meet with. Mr. Goff, or mayor pro tem?
Um, it, it hasn't been scheduled at this point, it's on, it's on future.
Email about the Wheat Ridge Business District wanting to discuss it first before it came down.
Wheat Ridge Housing Authority?
Housing.
Correct, yeah. As my understanding.
A request? Okay. Okay, well, I'll, I'll let Mr. Abbott know, and, that's, we, we mentioned it tonight. He's gonna talk to Janice, um, not Janice Smothers, Janice Thompson, the chair, okay, right, right. And then the last thing was, at the study session last week, uh, we talked about a resolution coming forward, that other cities have passed about eating well and living well. Um, I wanted to find out, is that, uh, resolution going to tie the city as far as any financial, future financial obligations, any type of social engineering type of requests that's gonna be coming out of that resolution? Because I know that Jefferson County, um, Health and Human Services has been pushing a lot of, um, agenda with, you know, private individuals and the cities. Do we see that, uh, being any financial impact on the City of Wheat Ridge anytime soon?
The resolution hasn't been developed yet, it's in the process right now. At this point, no.
So what's the purpose of it?
It's for future planning of, for example, streets, access to healthy foods. So when future resolutions or planning comes up, it might have a decision, it might have an impact on our decisions that we make.
It, it also creates a designation, that we are a city with, there are various things that have already in place, as far as the way our city operates in, in a healthful way, and there are certain qualifications that we already have in place, giving us this designation is very, um, beneficial for us, and, uh, I don't believe, as far as that actual designation, there's any costs involved.
No, there's no cost with the actual designation.
Right.
And, like she said, a lot of it, we already have in place.
Right, we've passed the, the urban gardening and everything. Do we see any, um, social engineering issues that's gonna affect our citizens in a negative way, where they're gonna be required to do something or not do something in the future?
No, it's a designation because of who we are, what we're, what we're doing, so that as we position our city for, uh, be it real estate or development or whatever, we have a, a designation that says we are a healthful city, and what goes with that are things that we already have in place, and we're wanting to take advantage of, of the, uh, the fact that we have urban gardening, that we have live local, that we have in a, in a, what's already in place. Give us the designation, is, it's like, uh, like we're the Tree City, it doesn't cost us anything, but it... It doesn't cost us anything, but it, it's a promotion item, it's a public relation.
And it's just a resolution, so it doesn't, can't obligate the city to anything.
Although I am curious, what was the item you mentioned? Jefferson County Health?
Jefferson County Health.
And what was the item you were concerned about?
In general, they've been pushing an agenda of no big gulps. I don't know about that one. So another question I had was, does this resolution address transportation issues for healthy living? Because tonight, we just, you know...
It's not one of the specific three items that they're addressing. It's healthy, healthy eating, healthy living, exercise, and a healthy workplace are the three areas. As far as transportation, I believe it's in there in a very general way.
So not further funding the Senior Resource Center doesn't really violate that type, that spirit of that resolution for transportation, for getting people to healthy places and healthy living locations?
Would it violate it?
Can we move on?
I'm just asking a question. I mean, I'm just trying to get the...
We did fund them, exactly.
Expanded, so. Anyway, thank you very much for your questions and answering them for me.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I want to say that I was very encouraged by the support that I felt around this council for the work of the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, which I continue to think is an important, important issue for our city. And I think, I think as time is waning on getting them some help to start some records, would it be appropriate to introduce a motion at this time?
Before you do, just to make sure everybody understands, that we do have it slated for next Monday to have a discussion about that, about historical society support. You can still make a motion this evening if you like, but just for your information, it is on the agenda for Monday.
That's on the agenda.
For next Monday.
I'll wait until we're able to discuss it more fully amongst the whole council. Thank you so much. Nothing further.
Mr. Urban?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Tomorrow morning at six AM, Care Bear Bakery will be opening at Thirty-Eighth and J. And right now, on their Facebook page, if you're watching the city council session, go on your Facebook page and like their page. If you get the three hundred and fiftieth like on their page, you get a free dozen donuts from them, and they're at like three hundred and twenty-five. I just checked it a few minutes ago. So if you go on right now, there's a chance you might be able to get that free dozen. But they do open tomorrow morning, starting at six AM. So maybe we can move that city alert back to six AM, wake everybody up, and head over to the bakery, and support that great small business on Thirty-Eighth and J. And just want to say thank you to Rachel and her staff over at the rec center for their help in the enrollment process for the summer camps, the summer. I recently went through that to enroll my daughter in the summer camps, and they did a great job, and Kara at the front desk was really great about getting that all taken care of, and be excited to hang out at the rec center this summer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. So I don't have much, but I'll be at the bakery at six AM, because I have a seven AM meeting at the hospital, so I'll cruise by the bakery on Thirty-Eighth as I, I'll stop in and say hello and welcome them. And I do have to say to that business, they have done a lot of work on that building, and I mean, I've been, it's been exciting to kind of see it going and going, and, you know, things on the windows, and now painting on the side of the building, and so I want to welcome them and see at six in the morning, and other than that, nothing.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. Actually, I just want to say thank you for all the work the staff has done, and this council specifically, on progressing economic development in the city. Very excited about the work that's coming forward on Thirty-Eighth and Kipling, and I know the residents of District Three, as well as the residents of the city are excited about that as well. So again, I just want to thank everyone for the hard work, and look forward to continuing the economic development activities that are going on in the city.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I am very happy to see Care Bear open, but unfortunately, I will not be there at six AM, but I'll go in later, I promise.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing that will happen between now and our next dais, is our kite flight festival is April twenty-sixth, eleven AM to four PM. We have a lot of fun events for non-wind activity, and we have some judging of kites, different categories, so bring out your kite, enjoy the weather, and have a little fun with your neighbors. Thank you.
And Ms. Woodin?
Nothing tonight.
I get to finish up here. I attended the Easter egg hunt. That was really, four thousand eggs. And those were from our Parks Department and Kiwanis Club, and it was just well-organized, and they even had an Easter bunny, and you could go sit on the Easter bunny's lap and get your picture taken, but he said I couldn't do it. Just a reminder, Channel Nine Health Fair, and I know that's not city, but it's going on right now in our city, and that is, that is really worth it. And you can, online, you can go and get registered, and saves a little time, but it's really worth doing, so I'm just, I encourage everybody to take advantage of that. And I think that's about all.
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter, and good night, and we're adjourned.